This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's Tuesday, March 31st, 2020. It's 7:11 PM. We're going to call the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present are Doug Roberts, Bob Shabbitt, and Joseph Hall. And the Item C Public Hearing, we're going to continue with PZ-20-1. A min special permit modification of site lighting at FedEx 350 Ruby Road. Owner FedEx Ground Package System Incorporated, applicant Ricky Garrett.
Okay, so Abby, I'm not sure what, I can try to push this over to you so you can present if you have everything up. If that's good, and if it doesn't work, I've got everything preloaded on the agenda. If you want to try that.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm gonna give this to you. Hold on one second. Okay. I'm gonna make you the presenter. It's gonna ask you what you want, if you want to share your screen.
Okay.
And if you click yes, it should bring up whatever you have, and then we can. So right now, we can see the go-to meeting. There you go.
All right, let me just get this. Maximize.
And so when you're all set and everything's done from this, I'll take it right back, but you have the floor.
Okay, let me just figure out how to do full screen here. All right, awesome. So, thank you guys so much. I know that this is your first time doing a virtual meeting. I really appreciate you all getting together to hold this meeting so that we can, you know, try and move this project forward. So just wanted to kind of acknowledge that you didn't have to do this. So I really appreciate you taking the time and effort to arrange this meeting. So during the last meeting, there were really two items that we had left that we wanted to follow up on in this next meeting. One was for you to review the special permit from previous stages. That was one item. And then the second item was for me to provide more information surrounding our lighting fixture and how it complies with the International Dark Sky Association's rules and regulations. So what I did today, I'm going, I have a few slides on a PowerPoint I'm going to use to talk through more details, more specifics on the lighting fixture. And then I also have a technical report from the manufacturer. That's another attachment to this meeting that I'll talk through as well. So moving on to the first slide here, I pulled this directly off the International Dark Sky Association's website. This basically is a bullet item of the criteria that they list for good dark sky friendly lighting. I'm just gonna kind of talk through the points and talk about how our fixtures meet these requirements. And I'll go in much more detail on kind of the light being fully shielded as well. So the first point, it's only to be on when needed. Our facility at FedEx is a 24/7 facility, so the lights do need to be on all night. There is an exception listed, of course, for facilities that are 24/7 operations that, of course, is excluded from having to turn off at all. So we are in compliance there because it is a 24/7 facility. The second bullet point, to only light the area that needs it. And in the plan that we provided during, you know, the last meeting, you will see that our lights are only lighting up the parking lot and the roadway. And there is kind of no, there's no spill over the property line. So all the light is focused towards the parking lot, and we're not lighting anything unnecessarily. It's all for the safety of the parking lot. The third bullet point, be no brighter than necessary. As I mentioned in the last meeting, our design standard was from FedEx was that we have to light to a one-foot candle minimum for their safety requirements. And we, of course, you know, just met that requirement, not going above one-foot candle at all. More than that, just, you know, doing what we need to meet that criteria and not going above that. The fourth bullet point is to minimize blue light emissions. So this has to do with the color temperature. A lot of color temperatures on the outside are 5,000 K, which are very, very blue. We are using a 4,000 Kelvin color temperature light here and not going above that for any of the lights. And this last bullet point, the fifth bullet point, which I'll go in more detail on the next slide, but it's for the light to be fully shielded and pointing downward. I'll go into this again in more detail on the next slide. But I did want to point out also on this page, I pulled this graphic directly from the International Dark Sky Association website. It's a graphic of acceptable lighting fixture types. And I have a red arrow pointing to the type of, we're using, you know, the standard shoebox fixture there with that the red arrow is pointing to, which is an acceptable fixture type for the International Dark Sky Association. So last time, I provided a spec sheet of the fixture that we're using. And I also wanted to mention that we decided that we will be adding an additional light shield. This was brought up by one of the panel members at last meeting. And I think that this is a really good decision to go with this accessory. It will, you know, block light even more so, kind of going outward and block all light from going up into the sky. And then it'll also serve as a glare reduction. As you look at the fixture from different angles, it'll cut off your view from a lot of different angles as well. So that will be added on to the fixture. And this next slide here, I, because, you know, it didn't list the International Dark Sky seal on the cut sheet, I did go to the lighting manufacturer that we're utilizing. The manufacturer's name is Altech. I asked them to provide a very detailed photometric report on the light distribution coming out of the fixture that we're using. The full report, I think it's 19 pages long, is attached to the meeting invite. But I pulled out some of the important information from that that we can look at that proves that, from this report, that there is no light being emitted upward. So on page one, towards the bottom of this report, I just kind of, we're zooming in on this. It, the report measures the light rays going from every single angle around the fixture in a, you know, 360-degree angles. And I highlighted both the up light, the low up light in the 90 to 100-degree angle, and high up light, 100 to 180-degree angle, that there is zero light going in the upward direction. So no light going up into the sky. This is another photometric diagram pulled from the, that 19-page report. The one on the left is from page 17, the one on the right, page 19. This diagram on the left, it really gets into the nitty-gritty of the light distribution. But what you're looking at is the red distribution would be if you were looking at the light from the bird's eye view. So top-down, like a plan view of the light distribution. And the blue curve that you see there, that kind of looks like a spike, that would be if you were looking at the light fixture as a side elevation view. And you could see the distribution and how it comes out of the fixture. And the important thing that we're looking at is this blue curve. You'll see the 90-degree horizontal line that goes right down the middle of that circle. And the important thing here is to prove that we have no light going up above that 90-degree horizontal line. And, you know, the same thing you could see on the right-hand graphic. It's just a little bit different way to describe, you know, the angles that the light's going in. But the important point is that the light is not going above, above the 90-degree angle, which is pretty detailed in the report that I, that I had provided. So that's kind of all that I have to present today. I'm hoping that the documentation that I've requested and presented today proves that we are following the International Dark Sky Association guidelines and providing dark sky friendly light to the FedEx parking lot.
All right, are there any questions from any of the commissioners? I see Andy is on now as well. Okay, any questions from members of the public? Sorry about that.
Doggy has a question.
Yeah. Again, any, any questions from the public? Okay, one last time, any, any further questions from the commission?
And for me, Walter.
Okay, thanks Doug. Yeah, guys, for the purposes of the record and the recording, if you are on the commission and you don't have questions, if you could just unmute yourself and let us know, that would probably be helpful, just so we can make sure you're still there.
Joe Hall, no questions.
Andy Marco, no questions.
Doug Roberts, no, no questions.
Bob Shabbitt? Bob, can you hear us?
Let me see if I can.
I have no question, I have no questions. My mic just came back up on the screen for me.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And my, my questions were satisfied from the prior meeting with the data that we just saw.
All right, so.
I'm gonna ask one more time, anybody out there from the public with any, any questions?
So, and Walter, just quickly, I did get, so I reached out to the members of the public that were at the last meeting to let them know that we were going to be having a virtual meeting, just to make sure. And I just got an email from one of the women who attended, Jessica Uzienblow. And she has a letter that she sent me. So if we're good with the presentation part, I can just put it up on the screen and I'll just, I'll just read it into the record for everybody, if that's okay?
Thank you.
All right, so Abby, I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal this back. Okay, give me one second. And I'm gonna share this letter. And then for the benefit of anybody who is, I think everybody's on the computer, but for folks that are by phone, I will read this. Says, "To the Planning and Zoning Commission, in response to FedEx requesting permission to add additional lighting to its facility, the neighboring residents of Wellington do not want any additional lighting from FedEx. Given the elevation of the FedEx facility, the quote 'dark sky' lighting quote, with its enclosed lighting does not diminish light pollution to the surrounding residents. We can see all the new lighting," in parentheses. "We are asking that the town keep in mind the regulations for lighting to be sure FedEx is in harmony with surrounding neighborhoods." Section 13. She lists a few sections, subsections 14, 14.1, 2, 13.6.4, 4.14, and 4.14.01. Also with reference to the following regulations in section, and then again lists 13 in subsections. And most importantly, section 13.06.02 stating lighting shall be limited to the required, to that required for basic security and protection of the premises. Continuing to state that lighting standards in most parking areas should not exceed 20 feet in height, but in no event higher than a height of the building adjacent to area to be illuminated. We are aware of the limitations we as residents have, but we are respectfully requesting that our comments be taken into serious consideration. We have already been greatly affected, sorry about that, by all of the recent changes at FedEx despite every effort we have made, and we do not want to add to our stress on a daily basis. Thank you for your time, residents of Wilderness Way." Did everybody, can everybody still see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't get a chance to talk with her directly. She just emailed this over. So I don't have anything else other than that. It came from, like I said, Jessica Uzienblow, is I think how you pronounce her name. And she was the one who spoke at the meeting that we had in person a few weeks ago. So that is all I have for, for that. Let me, I'm gonna go back to the agenda.
Okay. Anyone else have any further questions?
So this is Alexa. I have just a comment as related to the letter that was just read.
Who is this?
Alexa, I'm with Abby with Wesco.
Okay.
Um, so I think that her main concern was the, I believe it said 13.5.2. I don't know that for sure, because it was a hard, a little bit hard to read it. But it said lighting should be limited to that required for basic security and protection of the premises. And I just wanted to state that that's, that's all they're doing. They're not trying to have additional lighting for, you know, outside of that. As a matter of fact, FedEx Ground has a lighting spec that they need to meet for safety of their employees. And so, so it does meet that, that, that concern of hers and that request. And so I just wanted to kind of touch base on that because they've had their engineers put together a lighting spec that we were called, that we're called to follow. And so that's, that's where the lighting spec comes from.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. PZ 20-1, min special permit modification of site lighting at FedEx 350 Ruby Road. Owner FedEx Ground Package System Incorporated, applicant Ricky Garrett. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Bob Shabbitt.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think we, that was all the commissioners. All right, the public hearing is, is closed. All right, on to new business, which there's none. So we're off to old business. PZ 20-1, a min special permit modification of.
We lost it.
While we're waiting for him to come back up, this is Alexa again, I just wanted to ask if we covered all of the concerns that Abby reviewed for the light distribution and to see if there were any other questions, any concerns that we could address because we know how important it is, you know, to move forward and be able to move forward with the project for FedEx. And then also for the city, right, to go ahead and get it completed. And so just wanted to kind of ask if there were any other questions there.
Sorry about that, guys. I, my whole house lost power, so I.
All right, I'm back. I had to reload.
I have never, of all the things, I'm plugged into hardwire everything here. Even, we even wearing this headset and the whole house flash power. So I apologize for that. Hopefully, everybody else didn't get shut down. I still see we have 13 people in attendance, which is what we were at before. But again, I apologize for that.
I don't see, I don't see your video up, Mike.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
So, Mike, real quick, this is Abby. So are we good to go for FedEx?
No, we gotta, we gotta vote on it first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think my camera, I can see everybody here. For some reason, I think my internet's still coming back up, so it's not letting me connect to the video side. But as long as you guys can still see everything, I'm gonna, can you still see my screen?
Yes.
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 Okay. All right, so the meeting is still, it's still recording. So yeah, if you guys can just pretend like that didn't happen, that would be great.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start us up again with old business then, where that's about the time we got cut off. So we're on old business, PZ 20-1, a min special permit modification of site lighting at FedEx 350 Ruby Road. Owner applicant Rocky Garrett. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second, this is Joe Hall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion, motion carries.
Great.
All right, now you're all set, Abby.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for making the extra effort to have this go-to meeting so we could move this forward in spite of the coronavirus pandemic. And I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Okay, bye. All right, next item in old business, we have PZ 20-3. A min special permit addition of site lighting around basketball court, volleyball and playground. Owner town of Wellington, applicant Maureen Parcell. I'm gonna make a motion to approve PZ 20-3.
I'll second, Bob Shabbitt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it sounds like we got everybody.
Yep, I was watching the mics and it, and everybody came through.
Okay, so we're all set there as well. All right, minutes. Not sure everybody get, go ahead, Mike.
I think that, just because this was a new thing, I, we didn't send out the minutes because I just wanted to kind of figure out how this was all gonna work. So we've got two minutes, sets of minutes that we'll have to approve. So the next time we meet, we'll, I'll either get them to everybody ahead of time and we'll get them up on the screen. But I think for now, let's just table that.
Okay, I guess it's possible the next time we meet, it'll be this way again.
It's likely, yes.
Okay, correspondence, none. Public comment? Not quite sure how we do that tonight, but.
Yeah, so the way we've been doing it is, if there's anybody that's from the public that's here, either via phone or via the web, after, I'm just gonna unmute everybody. And if you have something that you want to say, and you're, you're not a commissioner, you can unmute your mic, and we'll just kind of go through, you know, one at a time and kind of take it from there. So I'm gonna push unmute, and then you'll be able to unmute yourselves, and you can address the commission. And I don't.
I don't see any takers.
Don't see any takers, no.
I do see Lori, welcome. All right. Staff report discussion.
So one thing, and I will try to bring up to you the memo as I talk, one thing that I wanted to make you aware of. Presented to the Board of Selectmen at the end of last week, the state has released a grant opportunity for towns to submit for developing affordable housing plans. Each town is required to have an affordable housing plan. And that's been the requirement since late 2017, but they never said what needed to be in it. They didn't say we needed to have it by, they didn't really provide any guidance at all. And so very few towns actually adopted them. But now there's a bill that's currently being considered, although with the legislative session on pause, I don't know when it will shake out, that would provide a deadline to have these plans adopted and also kind of give you an idea of what needs to be in them. So March 6th, Department of Housing released grant opportunity for towns to submit to get these plans written. It's a zero match, which means there's no out-of-pocket for the town. And so basically, I presented this to the Board of Selectmen because the grant requires a resolution from them, which we got. So just letting you know that we'll be submitting for the grant. And if we do get the grant, we'll be going through the process of developing the plan. And you'll hear more about it. But it's not a plan that's gonna turn all of the open parcels into affordable housing in Wellington. It's simply a grant to allow the town to create a planning process around developing the grant, developing the plan, sorry. So I just wanted to make you aware, if you have questions, I can, I can try to answer them. But that's potentially coming.
Oh, this is Bob Shabbitt. I was just interested, how could, how would that possibly affect if someone chose to build in, say, South Wellington area where water's available? Is there a possibility that they could force the issue of sewage disposal as well? So, because they don't, they don't have to play by the rules that everybody else plays by, correct?
Right, so basically, the way it works is state law essentially to any town that does not have 10% of its housing stock as deed restricted, affordable. And affordable is a formula that, that is town by town. If 10% of the town, of Wellington's housing stock is not deed restricted, affordable, then if an applicant came in with an affordable housing application, they would not be required to meet zoning. They would simply have to show that their application or their project would not have an impact to essentially safety. And that is a very limited scope, you know, recently a town denied because they said, well, you're not gonna have sidewalks the way we want you to, and we're worried that, that folks that don't have cars will be unsafe. And the judge said, that's not good enough. So this document is going, is not gonna, it's not gonna put us in a position where we're gonna be dealing with an application that we wouldn't get elsewhere. It's not gonna facilitate that. But what it, but what it might do is give us more, more, I don't want to use the word leverage, but it might give us more of an ability to sort of guide an application, if we were to ever have one, and say, listen, we have this plan, and we've already outlined that these areas are not acceptable for the following reasons. And so, you know, we don't think it's appropriate, and it gives them a little more direction. One of the conversations we had on Thursday, last Thursday with the Board of Selectmen is Wellington's not in a position to really see a lot of this pressure because we don't have a ton of large parcels that are not wet and that have access to water and sewer and. and proximity to, you know, good roads and all those things. So we're limited in whether or not we're going to see these.
Okay.
But, you know.
Mike, wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't possibly these be like multifamily type apartment type housing?
Yeah, it, it would essentially, there's nothing that limp, that says what they need to look like. There's different criteria based on the size for what the rent would have to be. So it could be a, it could be a single unit studio, it could be a multi-bedroom apartment. And there's a formula that, that you look at to determine what those things need to rent for to be affordable. So in theory, I mean, you could have a, a single family home, as long as it's deed restricted and not rented for above whatever the formula is, it can be considered affordable housing. So it doesn't so much regulate what they need to look like so much as basically just, just the rent cap.
So better safe than sorry to have this plan on the shelf, ready to go if it's needed.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, because we have to have it either way, being able to get money from the state to develop it and hold, you know, you know, go through the process and crunch the numbers and do this, you know, all professionally, if you will, rather than us having to develop it in, sort of in-house, gives us the opportunity to really check all the boxes.
Yeah, how often do they, are they willing to pay for things? I'd have to agree with you that it's probably a good thing.
Yeah, so we're, we're just at the point where we're filing the application with all this stuff happening now, with, with everything being shut down and on pause. And, I mean, they're given money for small business loans and things, so I don't know if they'll reappropriate it. But as of right now, the grants are first come, first served. So the sooner we can get it in, the sooner we might see the money.
Yeah, well, it's a good thing that.
And that's all I have.
All right, well, let's see, it's 7:43 PM, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
See you.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.